Good evening, welcome to our school meeting. It's Monday, July 17th, 2023, six o'clock. And this is probably largely bordering the 28th of November, called meetings order.
Mr. Andre?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayhard?
Here.
Mr. Gatton?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll's excuse. Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Reckley's is excuse. And Mr. Scarell?
Here.
We do a forum. We will continue. It's nice meeting Melissa for state statutes. Do we have community participation cities? We have more than one or just one person? Like three, four? Okay, all right. Who wants to go first? I'm going to go first. Okay, I'm going to read the the statement just because like some of you have it before. Alright, returns with the school board policy, one eighty-seven resident community members or families of open enrolled students and employees wishing to reflect the board may use on person or via email to superintendent. The written or verbal comment period shall last no longer than thirty minutes. Limited to thirty minutes maximum per person. Should there be more written comments submitted above the time allowed, the remaining comments will be provided to the school board members. A reminder for these system that speaking during community participation to complete the assignment sheet by the door to actively provide the administration with your name, address, phone number, email. This will help the administration with any follow up if needed. And finally, the community participation period is an important time for the Board of Education to hear concerns, gratitude, etc. of its constituents. That said, prior to making any statement, please be aware that each speaker bears the personal risk if anything they say during the community participation of the school board meetings, defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. Is that?
And that's recording, so I'm not sure. Okay, thank you. All right. Hi, my name is Melissa Bullinger. I'm concerned that I still have not received a response after repeatedly requesting information on the gender support protocols and documented distance, which was developed in October 2016 and revised in September 2021. I emailed both of these to everybody, so you all have your own copies. And also the elementary teacher in-service training slideshow from December 6th of 2021 called the Gender Support Plan Introduction: Creating a Safe and Positive Learning Environment for All. I've been asking questions about these documents for the past two years. Parents, grandparents, taxpayers, and even school board members, past and current, do not seem to be aware of these, and they all have a right to know. I have asked if these documents were ever approved by the school board, if they reflect school board policy, and if they're being taught and are implemented in Elkhorn area schools under the school board's authority. These are simple questions that have not been answered. If you aren't able to follow up, I will pursue future actions to bring awareness to the community and beyond. The superintendent and the administrators report to the board. As the president of the board, Matt, this is under your charge. This should be on an agenda in the very near future for the board to discuss at a school board meeting. Thank you.
Melissa, follow up question. Is there any questions that you've issued to me that you felt you didn't receive a response to? In that regard, because I believe you have been responding to several times. I wasn't.
Not about these. I sent them to the school board, and I wanted a school board response on these.
Okay.
Who is next? Just stay.
My name is Brooke. Thank you for listening to me. So I just want to tell you that I sorry, I gotta read it because thank you for taking the time to listen to me speak. First, I would like to share with you that I attended Elkhorn area school district, as did my husband. That said, I'd like to commend the district and its programs. My husband struggled in school with, as it was labeled, learning disability. He is a very intelligent man and was not given the attention and support that he that we have seen for our children. Both of my children needed math and reading intervention in elementary school. They received their extra help built right into their day through assured continued growth with their own pace while closing the gap between them and their peers. My son is now a senior and plans to attend college in 2024. He's been able to succeed in all of his grade level required classes, even some above grade level due to the extra support he has received early on in his foundation years. As for my daughter, she needed more help through sixth and seventh grades. Working in the middle school with Mr. Bo gave her the skills and confidence to be on high honor roll. Now, as an incoming freshman, she is starting the new program at Gateway where she will work towards her associate's degree. Thank you for all that you've done and your support in the programs that helped my children be successful as Elkhorn area students. This is not to say that their time at Elkhorn has not has been without its struggles. As an elementary student, my son and his peers lost a teacher to cancer, a classmate and friend to medical condition, a schoolmate to unknown causes, and now in high school, he has lost three friends to suicide. Needless to say, he and his peers have had more grief than anyone deserves. Through all this, the school has always reached out to make certain that anyone who needs the help has someone to talk to, even providing numbers for professionals outside of the school if needed. I'm impressed at how the teachers, parents, staff, and community have rallied together to support one another. I was even pleased to hear at one point a support dog was brought in to help those who needed that kind of help. I've emailed the guidance counselor on more than one occasion with worry for my son's mental well-being, and they always made sure he has reached out to and checked in on. I'm deeply saddened for the families and for my son and his friends by the loss of these children. However, I'm pleased to say that the district has provided many more services and outlets to help these people with their grief and awareness than what was available to me when I went through the loss of five classmates in my four years of high school.
No, I'm not doing this, Chris.
Hi, my name is Ellen Hawley. I'm a former school counselor, Elkhorn district. And actually, I'm tag teaming off, which I did not realize was going to happen. I just want to talk very quickly about mental health and the supports of the Elkhorn area school district. I read yesterday that the nine eight eight suicide prevention or suicide hotline has received over five million contacts in the first year. That is astonishing, and it's very, very, very much needed. I had asked Jason earlier in the evening how many social workers we have in the district now, two full-time, two county employees similar to our police liaison. Counselors in every building, which was actually mandated during the Scott Walker administration, the comprehensive school counseling program. And I think it's very important to look at school counseling services. It's a three-legged stool. If you've got your academic health, you have your career preparation slash post-secondary preparation, whether that's college or military or world of work. And then also the social emotional stability and growth. Just as hungry kids can't learn, kids that have trauma that is untreated and unrecognized cannot learn. And so I'm very appreciative as a mental health professional that worked for the district and still gets phone calls six years out because there are not enough mental health services in the community, and the school is really kind of that centerpiece of it, which is why I continue to be involved. So I wanted to recognize the continued support of the board. We're here to support all of our students. And as a person, as a professional that lost twenty students during my twenty years at Elkhorn, most of them suicide, knowing that that trauma does continue, not just for the family, but for those of us that dealt with it. So thank you. Please keep, you know, supporting mental health services for kids and faculty. It is the year of mental health, according to Governor Evers. And so, you know, thank you for supporting that. I certainly do. So thank you for your time.
Oh, no.
I was your counsel.
You know, it's interesting. A number of years ago, I was at Marquette, and I had a philosophy teacher.
Oh, real quick, Steve.
Oh, sorry, Steve Perkins. And he asked a class, no, he used different terminologies. I'm going to clean up in case somebody's dealing at home with kids. How do you make an alcoholic worse? And the class went back and forth on different things. And what he ultimately was getting at is to make it worse, you give them more alcohol. And I think that's really where we are with some of the mental health situations, like if Evers is on your program, I think, talking about the mental health problems and saying that's the biggest problem in the world. Well, what's making it worse is what's going on in the school space. And the fact that the board has been sitting here allowing this to happen kind of makes me sick to my stomach. And the stuff that Melissa has and shared, and the fact that nobody has a backbone to respond to it just makes me sick to my stomach. And the fact that that is in the curriculum, that's being shown to teachers, and the teachers are doing what with it? Because if they're giving that to the sons and daughters of Elkhorn, how dare this administration back that up? How dare you allow that? And anybody that backs that and whoever co-signs on it, they should resign. And if you as a board want to back that too, I guarantee the parents of Elkhorn have no idea what's happening. And because they have no idea what's happening, that's skating through our system, and our kids are getting worse because of it. And it makes me sick that this is happening to the sons and daughters of Elkhorn. And there is a storm coming. And then if you're not ready to fight that fight, step down now. Thank you.
So Steve clarifying.
I'd rather not.
So what Steve's referring to is the Title IX training that was administered to the elementary staff in 2021 after guidance from the federal government. So what it'd be referring to is the training of the staff regarding the town.
They have it, Jason. They have exactly what the material is. They don't need you to tell them what I'm referring to.
I'm referring because it's a public record, so people are creating with our training.
Well, Matt can tell people that. He's got it.
It's training from two years ago, and it was guidance from the federal government and from our attorneys. There are court cases that have been settled. I mean, I, there's only so much the district can do, and that's the honest opinion. And I don't, I'm not going to go into deeply, but I'm well aware of it. That's where we're at. We have somebody else?
Okay, Adam Andre from the parent seat. Couple weeks ago, I sent Jason an email to send to the board, and he, I guess, refused to do it because it was a nice email about Jason. So I wrote down a couple words instead of having it sent. So I just want to read it for public record. Members of the board, Mr. Truon, community members, Mr. Tadlock. I'm addressing you as parent, community member, personally commend Jason Tadlock. I have a note here from that. You do not time me, but we're good. See, like, be a time guy. Over the years, I've seen Jason exemplify characteristics of a great leader and would like that to be recognized. As a frustrated parent, I reached out to Jason when I first moved here with some concerns with Woodside. Jason addressed my concerns immediately and handled the situation with professionalism in class. The years since, I've witnessed Jason address some possible situations with the same professionalism time after time. Jason, I applaud you for always making yourself available to the community and having the tough conversations. We are in very, very challenging times in 2023. I don't want no one else at the helm for our district. It's an honor for us to serve on the board and get to work with you, Mr. Tadlock.
Thank you. Anyone else? Approval of the minutes, so regular session attached to your agenda, closed session that's been handed out. Questions, comments?
I move to approve the minutes of the June 26th, 2023 regular annual session, school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved in second to approve the minutes of June 26th, 2023 regular and closed session, school board meeting.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mr. Gatton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Scarell?
Yes.
General mother fund bills, Mr. Truon. The general. Other fund bills and saving covers checks number one four nine six six zero through one four nine seven forty. Wire transfers number eleven twenty-six through eleven thirty-six. ACH numbers seven ninety-four to eight oh one, oh oh one, oh one five, the combined amount of nine hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred thirty dollars and twenty cents. And there's a memo providing some additional information on several of the bills in your packet. And also to highlight, this is a time of year where we're crossing fiscal years. So some of the bills in your packet are last year's, and some of them are what I'll call current year. So the way you can identify in the upper right-hand corner, that's a six thirty twenty-three date, those are last year bills. And that's a seven date, and that's current year. So.
Questions?
I have a question. So one of the items on here is the crossing guards for the city of Elkhorn. How many of those do we currently have?
We, most of the crossing guards we have are our employees. So what you're seeing here would be for the
Police Liaison.
Police Liaison, plus they do the monitoring or the traffic control at the high school and middle school.
Okay.
Years ago, the city provided the crossing guards for the district that they were having a difficult time employing crossing guards. So we have our own staff do that. So we have locations out at Jackson and West Side as well that are doing it with our own staff.
So we would have three crossing guards spots, one at West Side, one at Jackson, one at the middle school, and then two traffic control officers each morning are dedicated, one at the middle school, one at the high school.
So the amount that's on here, the twenty thousand, this is for crossing guard police liaison, that's for the liaison. And then like, so I know that they have a police crossing guard down here at the high school, and they have one over the middle school for sure. That's for those three areas?
Correct. Yeah, those two areas.
Those two areas. I'm sorry, plus the liaison, correct, at the high school?
Correct.
Okay.
And the liaison.
Okay, so that's separate. Okay, so then, then, then I guess the question is, is at twenty thousand dollars a pop for two spots, that's ten thousand dollars.
About, I believe it's about three hundred of that is for the the traffic controllers.
Okay.
And the rest of that is for the police liaison.
Okay, so this is the liaison with.
Correct, got it.
Okay.
And the city fills this quarterly. So you'll see that every, every quarter.
Got it.
Yeah. But they bill both at the same time.
Okay.
So we just do one check.
Got it. Okay, that makes more sense. Okay. Other questions?
I have, I have a couple. What did we do to Clinton High School?
That's for liquidated damages. So that would be for a buyout for a contract for every staff member.
Okay.
So it wasn't like a damage.
That's a good question. Once we get past June fifteenth on the hiring, it's just about all of our new hires come with a, where they were under contract with another district. And so as part of being able to get them on board, we agree to pay their liquidity advantages.
Yeah.
And vice versa, if we have someone leave at this point, we have liquidated damages as well. And I always encourage them to have their future employer pay that. Ironically, if they didn't have any liquidated damages, the employer wouldn't have a way out of the contract.
Okay, yeah, I'm familiar with that process. I didn't know that journey. Wald County Health and Human Services Mental Health Navigator, we covered that fast, but I just keep seeing it.
That is, that is with the contract with the county for our social worker.
Okay.
And there's a shared cost of that position. So then they bill us usually on a monthly basis. We do see that almost every bill listing.
And last one is actually Chris.
Yes, sir.
Looking Glass Media.
Yes, what's that? That is the marketing company for Whitewater Theater. They're located, I think, California. And we use our youth build grant dollars, requiring we have to market the youth build and announce that. So those dollars, I think, about three thousand dollars-ish, that that pays for an already established video that we just host, a yearly subscription. Cool. Whitewater, like Clinton, really likes us to do that. They, I'm joking, they, so it's pretty low charge for a pretty high return on the investment. So and it fulfills our grant requirements, but those are all grand dollars.
I don't remember the plus charge that's on here. Is that for the entire year? Is that, is that like binary? Is this quarterly?
That, that's for the month. So that would be for June. It would be some extracurricular and summer school.
Gotcha. Oh, that's right. They do a lot of plus in their summer school. That's right. Okay. Other question?
I have a motion. I move to approve the general mother fund bills of July seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Check numbers one four nine six six zero to one four nine seven four zero. Wire numbers one one two six to one one three six. And the ACH number is seven nine four to eight oh one and zero zero one two zero one five in the combined amount of nine hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred thirty dollars and twenty cents.
Is there a second? It's been moved in second to approve the general mother fund bills of July seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Checks number one four nine six six zero to one four nine seven four zero. Wire numbers one one two six to one one three six. ACH number seven nine four two eight zero one and zero zero one to zero one five in the combined amount of nine hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred thirty dollars and twenty cents.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mr. Gatton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Scarell?
Yes.
Motion carried. Education for Employment.
My name is Mr. Chris Trotter. I'm the Director of Schoolwork Opportunities. It's highly referenced, the Wisconsin comprehensive school counseling model. And as that was more formalized by the state of Wisconsin in seventeen, twenty seventeen and eighteen, that became Academic Career Planning, or as we refer to it, ACP. ACP falls under the umbrella of Wisconsin PI twenty-six and Education for Employment. Every year, we are required as a board and a district to provide a plan based on the components on the left, which come right from the language of the law. And then we put together our plan. This is the document that we have been, that we have brought to you and have approved the last couple of years. Every year, numerous directors get together and review the plan, make edits, talk about where we're planning, where we're going next year, where we are in our current state. This also embeds redefining ready, academic career planning, work-based learning, career technical education, all of it. It is very uncommon for districts to follow the law and post this and get this approved. I have specific evidence to that, and we make sure based on the value we place on ACP, Education for Employment, that this gets in front. Once it's approved by the, reviewed and approved by the board, it's then posted on our website and shared with family. Do you have any questions?
I would just compliment Chris, formerly Julian Bella, and now Mike Dolly, and the high school counselors in each of the civilians. They've done a phenomenal way of leading on the academic career planning, being one of the first cohorts selected by the state to lead out. On that, I believe it was one of twenty-three something districts in the state that we are a part of taking that lead. Were held up as a model program to where we had districts from other states coming and visiting to see what they're doing. They're doing a fantastic job.
And I would say, based on the work we're doing, it's hard to put that on three or four pages. To be honest with you. It really is.
All right.
Questions?
I did not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe, is this, this is yeah, approval.
So looking for a motion.
I move to approve the Education for Employment and Academic Career Planning presented.
Is there a second? Second. So moved in second to approve the Education for Employment and Academic Career Planning as presented. All those, if they were to say aye.
Aye.
I don't know.
Those.
Motion carried. Right. The common standards.
I'd actually like to move to table this till next week if we could, when Julie had her here.
A second. That's moving in second to table the standards till next meeting. All those, if they were to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those. We'll do that.
Who's second is that?
I'm more into the director's report.
Hello, everyone. My name is Amy G. I'm the K five Director of Instruction, and as many of you are aware, Star Bash and I also share numerous other roles in the district. One of those in my case is that I manage our Title One, Two, Three, and Four programming. And so tonight, we're going to talk about our Title Three programming, otherwise known as our EL program. We thought summer is kind of a nice time to just make everyone aware of some of the additional programs we have running in the district. And so back in May of 2021, the Policy Committee spent some extensive time reviewing and really updating our English language programming policy, which was something we had to do to state in compliance at the federal level, state level. Rather than read through that rather lengthy document, I think what we're going to do instead tonight is just kind of look at how does this all come together in our school district. So Jason, if we want to just click ahead here, what we'll highlight tonight are just, what are some demographics of our EL programming? I'll introduce you to our staffing. What does their role look like in the district? What are some of our sources of funding? What does our family outreach for our ELs, families look like, some of our celebrations in the district, and then some minor staffing changes and what's on the horizon for the next school year? All right, so just to help everyone here and online understand what is the definition of an EL learner? And bear with me, because if there ever was an alphabet soup in education, it definitely applies in our EL situation because they've continued to change the acronym numerous times. In fact, since I've been in my role, I think it has changed three times. So it's just trying to keep up. So you may have heard of this as the ELL program, the ESL program, or now the EL program, because they feel that saying English language learners is repetitive because English is a language. So we now refer to them as English learners. But basically, a student who qualifies for this program is a student whose ability to use the English language is limited. Basically, because his or her family or people in their non-school surroundings are speaking a second language, and that's their native language. And because of that, they have limited English proficiency, and therefore we provide different programming for those students in our district as well. To give you an idea of our demographics, our highest concentration of EL learners is at Jackson School, where fifty-two of, say, our four hundred and twenty-five students may qualify for EL services. You can see that overall, our district population is sitting at about four percent of our school population. The demographics, each year, as we have new students transfer into the district, we always keep an eye on students who may be arriving, say, with an IEP, or perhaps we're receiving EL services in another district. Last year, we had twenty-seven incoming EL students. We have a special classification for new students to the district who may be newcomers to the United States. Those are students where this is kind of their first arrival to the United States. They haven't lived here previously, and therefore their English skills are extremely low, and that requires a lot of additional servicing in our program. We also had four students open enroll, and then that again gives you our total of EL students in the district. When we think of an EL student, you know, we often think of, well, they're all Spanish speakers. And clearly, ninety-three percent of our EL population is, but here are some of the other languages that our ESL teachers in the district also service. Clearly, we do not speak all those languages, and so obviously, we have amazingly trained teachers who are able to reach these students. We also have other tools that we can utilize. We also have other tools that we can utilize to assist us with those language situations. And you can see most recently, we've had a family from Afghanistan that was resettled into the district. And that's where the Pashto language comes from and they're at all of our different schools throughout the district. Okay, all right. So just looking at our graduation rates of our EL students, you'll see that those sit rather high and continue to improve throughout time. Last year, our graduation rate at the high school was ninety-four point two percent. Looking at the prior year, and so all of but one student completed that program this year. So our I believe that the support we're providing particularly through the elementaries, middle, and especially at that high school level. Is one of the reasons that our students are crossing that threshold. And so we're very pleased with that.
And to provide clarification, this is referring to the EL graduation rate.
Yes.
And what does that entail to graduate from EL?
No, this does not. This is this is.
This is the actual high school graduation.
I'll talk about that, what Jason's referring to in just a minute. Yep.
All right. And high school graduation rates. We can continue to work with the student till they turn age twenty-one. But if they don't graduate with their cohort, then they're not counted as graduating. So say a student finishes up in the summer after the graduation or that following year. They would still not be counted as having graduated within that four-year cohort. So we do have students who finish after.
All right, so the district recognizes that students identified as EL students are entitled to an effective instructional program and supportive services to meet their needs. So with that in mind, as part of our plan, we need to have a procedure for identification. What does our educational programming look like? And then what do our transition services look like after students exit that program? How do we provide kind of oversight and minimal support for a two-year period? As those services are then lifted. And so that's what we're going to talk about next is what does our servicing look like? And we'll begin by taking a peek at our staff. All right, so we have ESL and bilingual teachers on staff across the district. Sarah Faith is our high school and CCA educator. And she is both an ESL, English as a second language, there's another acronym, as well as she is bilingual. Ellie DeBeau has covered our middle school. She is a part-time ESL and then fifty percent reading specialist. It has been really wonderful to draw on Ellie's talents and abilities. Because we are able to cluster group both our high school and middle school students from Afghanistan to receive jungle reading instruction from her. She's done an amazing job moving our two children along at that level. Ellie, however, is just an ESL teacher, not bilingual. That brings us to Rosario Manriquez at Jackson School. And then John Walsh is our other one covering the elementaries, as well as options and Tibbetts and P two is a bilingual educator. So typically, what they do in our schools is they work with classroom teachers to differentiate the curriculum, the instruction, the assessments. Things that are designed in English, they can then determine, you know, what needs need to be translated into their home language? Do they just need someone to interpret, read to them in their native language, help them in their responses in English? They also work with one or small groups with our EL students in small group. They connect with our EL families. And this is a really important element of the EL programming. I can't say enough about how well our EL staff does build those relationships with our Spanish-speaking families. They provide ongoing translated communication and they provide the programming we need to meet the needs of EL students and families. They also administer the access assessment to all EL students. I'll talk a little bit about that in just a minute, but that's basically the assessment that's given to all EL students in our in the United States. The window for that is kind of December through the end of January that we are to administer that test. What's nice about that is if students are transferring different schools, different states. That data then comes and we can kind of get an idea of where that child is at as they enter our program. In addition to that, there is a lot of record keeping that comes with our title three and the bilingual bicultural program we manage. Including individual plan, exit paperwork and all of those sorts of things. So our teachers do a phenomenal job behind the scenes at G N. All right, our ESL teachers have been working closely with CISA two. And they're what we call the EL consortium. That's where all of the area school districts in southeastern Wisconsin. Who are running an EL program meet throughout the year. We are utilizing the updated RITA framework. RITA stands for that world class instruction design and assessment. So while we have different curricular standards, these standards help guide our work with our ESL students. They provide some really wonderful strategies, ideas for what we call scaffolding. So that those students are successful in the regular classroom. And so that's some of the work that we've been doing with CISA two is just becoming familiar with that and best practices for our EL students. Here's just a couple of quick snapshots of our teachers in action with our EL students. All right, we are also very blessed in our school district to have some amazing EL bilingual support staff. At the high school, we have Jamila Craver and Carmen Fortov. At the middle school, Laura Delavega, she has been with the district a considerable amount of time. We're grateful for her assistance. As well as Maria Garcia Estaves. And then we also have at Jackson Elementary, Dahlia Rashka, Arlette Garcia Lopez. Servicing Westside and assisting also at Jackson in auctions as Claudia Torres. And then at Tibbetts, Cheryl Neidfeld has just retired. But she too, as a reading specialist, has been very supportive in our EL work there with our few EL students there. And then the aides also play an important role in all of the programming we're doing. You'll see that sometimes we have close-ups of the aides, but often they're pushing into classrooms. Trying to service students within kind of that natural environment, either in a small group with other peers. So that we can provide as much of this programming in the regular classroom throughout the day. All right, a few years ago, the district made an important hire in Linda Byerly came on board. And you may know her from the person who is here at the reception desk as you enter the district office. What people may not know is she's an amazing translationist. And she handles all of our translations that go out particularly in Spanish to all of our families. I was recently talking to Katie Hoffman, our registrar, and she said it makes such a difference. When families may come in and they're bringing someone with to help them translate. And I mean, imagine trying to register children and it's in a language that maybe you're not as familiar with. And the minute that Linda can step in and start speaking Spanish, she puts families at ease. And is really able to help them navigate those difficult situations. And again, it's so wonderful to have her here to translate anything that needs to go out for our families. And then program management, my assistant Brenda Harris. As I said, there was a lot of paperwork behind the scenes as far as managing the ongoing communication to families. All of our students, similar to our specialized students who receive an individualized plan. Receive individualized information regarding their EL students as well. So thank you to those two individuals. Just to give you a quick snapshot about EL funding. Our program with the staffing costs, a little for staff development, some for student resources. And then again, we do, we need to have interpreters on hand for state parent conferences or other special events. That budget sits at just about half a million dollars for the year. Here are two of our funding sources. Typically, that's the amount we receive in title three. This year, we also had some carryover dollars we could put towards staffing and staff development. And then typically, we receive about thirty thousand dollars annually from the bilingual bicultural category. Just to give you an idea, title three is part of ESSA, which is that every student succeeds act. The purpose of title three is to help ensure that our English learners attain English proficiency. We have plans that we file in our ESSA plan. We have about five specific questions that we answer in regards to our staffing. What type of programming we use, what that looks like. And so that's on file with the state at all times in regards to title three. And then our bilingual bicultural plan, I think states are just clicking ahead. Is something that we also qualify because we do have at least ten students or twenty students in these grade level bands that speak, in our case, Spanish. And so that's another plan that we file with the state that then secures some of the funding that we receive. And so we're working on getting that plan in filed within the next few weeks also. All right, how do we identify our EL students? Parents may recall, as you mentioned for the first time, there is a home language survey that may pop up. I remember as a parent looking through that myself. For our families completing that, based on how that's those questions are answered. And again, we have to have that survey that's ordered by DPI that we have a home language survey. That's where if something were to plague on that. Indicating that there are multiple languages spoken in the home, other things like that. Then our EL staff will call the family and just check in and find out if, say, additional screening may be necessary. If the child is screened and found to qualify for EL servicing, then that is what we would begin for the child. As long as the parent agrees that this would be in the best interest of the child. Each year, I had mentioned the access testing takes place and our students are evaluated in those four areas of how well they speak English. Their ability to listen and comprehend English, their ability to read in English as well as write in English. And you'll see that they are scored between a one and a five. And so you see a lot of decimals. Like they're at a two-point-three level in reading, but their speaking might be at a three-point-one level. And so we get a score in each of those areas, which gives us an idea of where the child has really grown throughout the year. Areas that we could continue to address. When a child reaches the mark of five or higher, then we can exit them from the program. Okay, so that's kind of gives us that idea. So a student is identified needing EL support. Following that, that level of support is determined and provided. Test annually and then either they continue in the program or they may be dismissed from the program, which is cause for celebration. And so depending on their needs, we goal set with both the child, the classroom teacher. You'll see this is an example of a form that we may use with one of our students. Listing, you know, their listening score, speaking score, what are some things that that child can be working on? What are some ideas we have? So it's it goes along with a lot of the role setting we do with our students in the district. This is just an example of how that may look for an EL. All right, once a student reaches that marker five or higher, then we begin that transition plan. Those plans are in place for two years where we consider continue to monitor the academic growth of the child. Ensuring that they, you know, continue to make good progress. If at any time that is not the case, parents feel strongly that, you know, we may need those additional supports in place. And we look at that academic record, there is a way that a child could transition back into the program if necessary. We find that that rarely happens, but again, that's just how we monitor our student progress for those two years. All right, one of the things we do as part of title three is we do need to do outreach for our EL families. We work with them on what are some topics that they would like us to cover. But some of the things that we have worked on is working with our families on home activities they can do to support their learners in reading and math. Here you see photos from a few years ago where we did talk about, you know, how you read with your child. You know, what are some different things you can be doing in the home? Sometimes, as parents here may know, navigating that registration process, be that for the regular school year, for summer school. That can be a little daunting on Skyward at times. And so we provide that registration support in different evenings throughout the year. We also, especially once we were going virtual for a while with COVID. Or in the event that we did again, we worked with our families so they too could help navigate that process. So navigating the Google Classroom and different classroom maps is important. And then our different schools may also plan cultural events where we invite the families in for a evening. They all plan that evening. They may bring in different cultural foods, different things like that, just to share about the Hispanic culture. We have also worked very closely in the community with Bart Isaacson and the Sugar Creek Lutheran Church. As they were the sponsor for our family from Afghanistan. So since February of twenty twenty-two, we've been really busy and advocating with them. And recently, we have started to work with Gateway to promote some of their learning opportunities that are there for our EL families. For example, they have started like a CNA course that is offered in Spanish. So our Spanish speakers can attend that, receive that certification. And so just getting that word out. Because we have that direct connection with the family. So we're starting to network with them. Each spring, as we, as I said, we take that access test between December and January. Those scores come back to us in mid-April. And we want to celebrate that graduation of students exiting our program. This year, we had fifteen of our EL students qualified to exit. And so we host an EL celebration for families each year. And we're blessed as Jason Tadler is also a Spanish speaker. And so he delivers an amazing speech. He wants to ask me, now remind me again, what do I say that evening? Unfortunately, I'm not very good at reminding him what he said because I don't speak Spanish. But he does a nice job connecting with our families as well. And so we celebrated our fifteen students this year. All right, minor stacking changes for next year. We are going to be welcoming Kimberly Gerber. She is going to be our new full-time ESL teacher. She's coming to us from the Kenosha School District. We are also transferring Claudia Luna to the middle school. She was a special education aide here at Jackson and is coming over. And we may still have one more stacking change as well at the middle school level. But very excited to be retaining our EL teachers, our EL aides and our supports throughout the district. And I do want to extend a thank you to our EL team members, as well as our entire Elcorn or Schoolmaster staff. They work very closely with our EL team, making sure the success of our students. And thank you to our school board members for their support as well. And thank you for just learning about our EL program tonight. All right, any questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. On, let's see what page it is, so breaking up all our thing here. It's in, Jason, I'm sorry, it's on. It's on the pages. So let's see, it says funding for our EL program. Thank you. That's the, so that's the page right there. You said, please correct me if I'm wrong, I thought I heard you say that our the staffing for the program or the the cost of the program is a little over half a million? And then we're only bringing in about fifty thousand? Then do we just make up the rest of the money ourselves at that point?
That's correct.
Okay.
EL, similar to special education, is transfer of service eligible? So if we have new students who move in which require additional staffing. It is a revenue limit exemption, or we can increase the revenue limit to cover those additional costs. But it is, it is one of those, one you're required by a lot of provided under ESSA anyway, but it's not funded nearly. You know, to the extent of what the program costs.
All right, I understand that. It just seems, it just seems like the.
Yeah.
The 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 cost difference is extraordinary compared to some of the other programs that I see. One of the other questions that I had. You, you were talking a lot about the individuals and working with them and getting them across the finish line. I. Is one of the goals of this program? To be able to help them integrate into, you know, Elcorn is this internet, like learning English, things like that? Or is it, is it, so I know a lot of the people that you were talking about were bilingual. Or do we just only focus on helping them get through high school or get into school in general in their native language?
So that's a, that's a wonderful question. We are working towards developing English proficiency in the student. So a student who is reaching that mark of a five is able to, as a composite, speak, write, listen and comprehend. And read English at a level that they should be very productive members of society and be able to do that at an independent level. At the same time, we also want to respect the fact that they are dual-language individuals. And we certainly would like them to continue in their native language, continue to maintain those skills. One of the things we're working on at the high school level is a certification. Where students can graduate with another certification that they are bilingual. where students can graduate with another certification that they are bilingual, meaning that they are speaking fluently in two languages. There's a few hoops we have to jump with the state, but that would help us honor things, um, from the EL program in the fact that you've mastered English and you've continued to grow and develop in your native language. Um, it also takes a look at our English speakers who have done extensive work in a foreign language and would be considered bilingual in that language. So we're in the process of getting that certification in place. One of the things we talk about at our EL celebration though, is the uniqueness and the, the wonderfulness of the fact that you speak two languages. And, you know, we're not saying that, say, English should, you know, override your ability to speak in many cases, Spanish or Vietnamese, um, whatever other language may be their native language. It's just, um, you know, they do need to learn English in order to move through, you know, our system and, and to become, um, employed and, and all of those things. So, um, and we work with all of our students, you know, some of our EL students may also be, say, in our ABID program. They may also be in our AP classes. Um, you know, we work with each child as far as, you know, what their needs may be so that they can be successful both here and then in their future career.
Cool. All right, thank you.
Yeah, our primary focus is English, though. We don't have a dual language program like other districts or a bilingual ed where they're taught in, in both languages. It's primarily English, but as Amy mentioned, I find a lot of our, you know, heritage speakers that, who are fluent in English and don't have an accent that are, they're actually a little shy about admitting that they speak Spanish. So we try to encourage them, even when I've done mock job interviews and gotten through that. Why isn't this on your resume? You need to let your employer know, just be proud of the fact that you're bilingual. Was there another question, Devin?
It's really, no, not really, no. Thank you.
Hey, uh, personnel sheet. It's, so we're wrapping, wrapping up the hiring now for the coming school year. Um, you see, there's a number of resignations there. We want to thank all of them for their service and wish them the best in their new opportunities that, um, they, they're pursuing. And then we'd like to welcome all of the new appointments on there. And if you have questions regarding any of those, I'd be happy to answer those as best I can. I believe at this point, we only have a, I, I'm not sure. We might have all of our professional staff positions, uh, covered. We may still have a special education room that's set up on the next board meeting. Um, we have a, you know, a few will still be in the hiring for specific staff positions until the new school starts. And more than likely, we always have a laid position on the, the teaching roles to. Any questions regarding the personnel sheet?
I move to approve the personnel recommendations sheet for July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, including new employment contracts, addition of pass in the background checks, and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Is there a second? Second. I move in second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for July seventeen, twenty twenty-three, including new employment contracts, commission pass in the background check, and district mandated.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mr. Gatten.
Yes.
Mr. Rovall.
Yes.
Mr. Sparrow.
Yes.
I have one school gift present this evening. Pete Keel has donated five hundred dollars to the Elkhorn Area High School Auto Club.
Looking for a motion to approve it?
I move to accept the generous gift as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
So I moved in second to accept the generous gift of Pete Keel as presented. Uh, all those will give us a say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Second reading.
Yeah, if you have any, um, questions or concerns that were brought up related to the, um, policies that were on the docket, so.
Can you, can you pull up one eight seven?
Yes.
If I can make a amendment. And I noticed that when I was looking over it again, and I don't know how I missed this in the first place. Do you want me to read it? So, so, yeah, sorry, so at the third, uh, rate.
Right here?
Yeah, after discussion of any single item. So this paragraph, we're, we all agree, we don't want Jason to have to read emails or present it. Um, but it seems to me like we're stopping the emails altogether the way that it reads. So if you're to, if you're to make a public comment through an email, it should still be entered into the minutes, but not read by a board member or Jason.
Oh, yeah.
You see what I mean?
Right, as. So you said, so if I'm understanding correctly, um, the, you would like it to still be submitted to be, not read in, but, um, given over to, to have in the minutes, but just not read at the.
Correctly. If you're gonna, if you're gonna, if you want it read out loud in public comment, come here and read it in public comment. But you also shouldn't be restricted from sending in an email for record of public comments. You should be. So let, let me read the, the two sentences too, because it'll make sense. Um, the way I wrote it was, uh, "Community members that wish to, to email public comments may do so to the district administrator. Contents of the email will be forwarded to the entire board as well as entered into the minutes for public record. Paper copy will be provided to each board member at the next board member, or excuse me, board meeting, so that we can see whatever that email is, but then it'll go into the minutes." And then it's, to me, we, we'd lose the, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I, I like that. I think that works. So I see. So you're wanting it to be able to be officially noted that that individual would be a public comment to the board.
Right. And the way that we redid it, way that we redid it, I think we accidentally struck all the notes rather than.
So why don't if, uh, let's see, for the name, for the person may submit written. Okay, so let's just make that proposed change right here.
Here's how I wrote it.
Is, was everybody okay if I just go ahead and write over that? For what? I apologize for my, my typing.
I think he's right. Um, since this is a change to the one that was passed last time, does this mean that the process starts all over again?
No, you just.
Do we need to provide a paper copy for forwarding against all the board members?
I, I hear that embarrassed because I like paper.
I, I am one hundred percent, like, I am the opposite of Adam on paper copies versus not electronic copies, but, but, but in this circumstance, I honestly believe that he's probably right here. Having a paper copy being brought in is probably the right thing.
All right, so this probably won't happen. Probably won't happen, but it has happened in other districts where one, I can't believe I have over three hundred emails on a topic.
And then we have to make.
By policy, I would have to be printing a book.
I mean, that's, okay. I did, I, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking about that. I would just, I mean,
no, that if you want the book, you can always ask. And this would no longer be.
Yeah, a mess versus.
Is there a timer or a limitation for the community members that wish to?
I just want to make sure, um, so we're not, we're not messing with things in the future. It says, as well as entered into the minutes, that does not mean we have to read it next to minutes, correct? We just can.
It's just attached as the exhibit.
We're just no tape during.
Okay.
No tape.
Okay, that was the point of it originally, is we didn't want to read.
Right. But it's still there.
Yeah, it's still there. It's still entered. Okay.
I went and read some of the other minutes and it was, you know, Phil Truand said that he was sick of people asking questions about pills and. It was just about the subject and there's something.
Okay.
It's a community member that wishes. Really, it's precluding the community, but I don't know what you mean.
No. Just a community member made that wishes to email.
If the community member wishes. Does that work?
That looks correct, yeah.
Anything else related to those policies?
Since of that change, do we need to, uh, second it?
You did it as modified.
Okay.
Other questions?
I move to delete policy one seventy-one point two, exhibit agenda format, and approve modified policy one eighty-seven public participation, and three thirty-three point two student surveys as presented. As modified, sorry.
Second. All right, so I moved in second to delete policy one seven one dot two, exhibit agenda format, and approve to revise policies one eighty-seven, public participation at board meetings, and three thirty-three dot two, student surveys as presented, or as modified.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mr. Gatten.
Yes.
This is Ingersoll. On stage, she's, excuse, Mr. Rovall.
Yes.
And Mr. Sparrow.
Yes.
All right, uh, just a reminder that next week is our school board annual meeting. It'll be at six o'clock PM in the auditorium of the high school. The regular meeting will follow, um, at the high school as well, separate immediately following the annual meeting. Six thirty, six forty-five initiative. Uh, that's all I have for announcements. And we do have a closed session.
Very looking for motions adjourned this session.
I move to adjourn into, uh, thank you. So closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen dot eight five, parent one, parent C, to consider salary adjustments for supervisors and administrators. The school board will reconvene in open session for action as appropriate and/or adjourned.
Is there a second? Second. So move in second into adjourned closed session pursuant to Wisconsin, Wisconsin State Statute nineteen twenty-five one C, to consider salary adjustments for supervisors and administrators. The school board will reconvene in open session for action as appropriate.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart.
Yes.
Mr. Gatten.
Yes.
Mr. Rovall.
Yes.
Mr. Sparrow.
Yes.
Thank you for everybody for coming.